Okay, I'm going to, I'm gonna go ahead and start. Thank you for, thank you for coming. Obviously, I'm Sheriff Kieran Donahue. This is Captain Darren Ward. He's our jail commander. Quick disclaimer, my eye is terrible, so try not to look at it. I'll try not to give you the wrong view. And no, it's not domestic violence, although my wife put her thumb through my eye accidentally. It's always an accident, but crazy, crazy story, but it's bruised terribly and it probably won't look any different for two more weeks. So if you watched an earlier broadcast on the news, you'll see me on three different channels from earlier today at a press conference, so you'll get a really good look at it. So I apologize, and Jeannie, please.
I apologize.
No, I, I, anyway. So Chief, thank you. Mayor? So we're just about to get started, Mayor and Chief. Thank you for coming. So the reason we called the town hall meeting, we wanted to give you some information that we work with every day. Obviously, our jail, as you all are aware, has its own personal issues. We've had several issues for many years. And again, the captain is our jail commander, a couple of our lieutenants, Andy Keel and Eric Miller are here today. They both work under his command structure over there. Today, we house about 477 inmates. We have the capacity for 477 inmates. That includes our tent structure, our soft structure. And that soft structure was built, Captain, roughly 10 years now? We've had it?
2006, correct.
So almost 10 years. There's an end of life on that particular building. But it was built, designed to have our work release program so we could expand our inmate population in the day. As you all are probably painfully aware, as taxpayers, we were sued by the American Civil Liberties Union about five years ago. And there's two different, two different cases. The Davis Consent Decree and the Young Agreement is what they're called. And we were sued under 17 stipulations about our particular facility. And we lost in federal court here in Boise on those 17 stipulations. And so for the last five years, we've been under a federal consent decree. And one of the conditions of that consent decree is that we have a cap on the number of inmates we can house any given day. That cap, we violate the federal judge's order and we violate the agreement that we have with the ACLU. So we're very conscientious about how many people we house. And of course, what that dictates for us is that our staff, the prosecuting attorney staff, the public defender staff, works every day with the judges, with themselves, and then we make recommendations to the judges. Recommendations, because only a judge can let someone out of jail or decide who's getting out today. But each day, we do let people out of jail because we have to stay underneath that cap of our, of our agreement. So really challenges us in terms of running a jail of this size. We have a population of roughly 200,000 people here in the county. And the jail was built in 1993, really wasn't designed or built for that. We have a jail that was poorly designed architecturally in the beginning and just wasn't really built to think out 20, 30 years. And as we approach those, these numbers of 200,000, obviously, the mayor and the mayors of other cities and city councils, we want economic growth here in the communities because that, that's why we live here. We want safe communities, but we want economic growth. It really challenges people like the chief and myself and others in law enforcement. How do we keep the public safe? How do we avoid the taxpayer spending money to the ACLU, among others, and avoid this very, very costly litigation? So that's kind of a little bit of background. And from the, I can't speak for anyone other than the sheriff's office, so there's a proposal that has come forward to expand this particular area to house more inmates. Because quite frankly, part of people, some of the things that take a timeout and get their head a little straight and quit committing crime. And that could be from a simple theft to burglary, to armed robbery, to homicide, aggravated battery, rape, sexual assault. Everything's encompassed. So it would, I would be remiss if I didn't give you a little bit about how the jail operates. And obviously, the captain can speak to this as well. But when a person comes to our jail, if Chief Kingsbury has someone arrested here in Nampa and they come to our jail, there's a book-in process as normal to any facility. But then what we have to look at is how does this person classify? What is their criminal history? What's the, what's the type of crime they committed? Because they're guilty until, or they're guilty, yeah. They're innocent until proven guilty. So we're the storing house. We have to house these people. And quite frankly, by statute, your sheriff has to do that in the county and the state of Idaho. The sheriff is statutorily held to operate that facility. But our job, and our number one job in that facility is the safety and security of the inmates and safety and security of the staff. That's our number one priority. So when that person comes in, say, "I'm an aggravated battery", they're gonna look at my criminal history and say, "Where are we going to house this individual?" And we're gonna show you a couple of clips of inside the jail so you get a better feel for that. But housing is the inmate where he or she is safely housed. Doesn't offend, doesn't offend on or commit additional crimes in the facility on other inmates or against the staff as well. So this classification thing that we're gonna talk about is very important because when we look at our jail, we used to have 750 inmates. Before this consent decree, we had 750 inmates. Today, we're capped at 477. So we were way above what the court said. That's not acceptable. You're stacking these people like cordwood. You're putting them in triple bunks. You're putting them in boats, plastic tubs on the, on the concrete floor to sleep. And we were wrong and, of course, we're right. And that's all we can say. We were wrong. So when we look at that, it doesn't slow down the population of our growth. We've got, the recession has passed us. We're starting to get good economic growth again. But with growth comes crime. And just for an example of that, since December, earlier December, in the Treasure Valley, we've had eight homicides. Well, if they're in Canyon County, those could be housed in our jail, right? And Chief, thank you for helping us with our latest stabbing incident. I spoke for you or in, in absence of you today on the press conference. But we have a couple of very dangerous young men who are now in our county jail. And thanks for your help and the cities for getting us there. So how does that come to here? Well, then the county commissioner said, "We have an idea to propose a expansion on the current jail." What, some of the things that I just want to make sure that everyone's aware of. It's no secret that I don't think this is a good idea. I don't think it's a good idea from the taxpayer's perspective. I don't think it's a good idea for, from the law enforcement perspective, because I don't think, I don't think we can make A meet B. I think that the need is far greater. So you're gonna hear me tonight talk about the better option than spending the taxpayers' money, in my opinion. This is my opinion, the captain's opinion, is I would rather you don't do anything than needlessly spend money of the taxpayers' dollars that we can't recoup down the road. There's other people who disagree with that. By golly, that's certainly, everyone has their opinion. Currently, just to show you all, the county has put out what we call an RFQ, a request for qualified builders, a team. And that process has been underway for a few months now, several months. And as the sheriff, I am now a part of that team to determine and hire, if you will, or award a contract to an appropriate, determined qualified build design team. There are three companies who have listed. That's ESI, McElvein, and Scott Hedrick Company, Construction Company. So we're in the process of interviewing those folks. Today was no exception. We had an open meeting with the board to see how they would plan to expand, do this expansion under the many, many criteria that they're going to have to meet from the county's perspective and just the opposite, such a limited space to build an expansion. So that process is underway. We expect that process to culminate in terms of awarding a contract to a builder by May 1st at the very latest. And that's so just a month away. And then that team, that company who's awarded that by the county, and that will be a decision by the county commissioner, based on the panel's recommendation, which I'm a part of, then that county are the design phase. Engineering plans, design of how they build on to this building that exists. And that could take anywhere from one month to seven months, is what we've been told today in the, in the open meeting. And the six to seven months is far more likely because you're talking about a $13.5 million expansion, very complex. It's a jail. So we're not building a Walmart. No offense to Walmart, but we're not building one. We're jails are very, it's high security and we're gonna be very, it's gonna be very detailed. So that kind of gives you some background. Another thing that you may or may not know, in Idaho, we have what we call the Idaho Jail Standards. So the Idaho Sheriff's Association hosts that. And since 1978, Idaho Jail Standards have been in place to have a standard in the industry as to what, what do we do with things like this? And so when new jails are proposed or jail expansions are proposed, the county or whatever that county is, they bring those plans, typically the sheriff and the board of county commissioners of that particular county, and they bring it before the Idaho Jail Standards Board, which I'm part of, the captain's a part of, many sheriffs and commissioners are a part of throughout the state. We meet, we meet twice, twice a year. And at this point, we now have a jail inspector who goes out to all of our jails in the 44 counties. Well, not all 44 counties have jails. And they inspect it on us annually to make sure we're sticking to those standards. So that's another thing that this whole process will be thrown in front of is the Idaho Jail Standards. Possibly in June, more likely in December, is the way I understand it. So what's the, what's the rub? Well, for us, what we want to present to you tonight from the sheriff's office is we feel there are roughly nine to 10 major issues with this expansion proposal that we feel maybe they can be addressed. Some we don't know that they can be addressed, but as a taxpayer, you need to know what those are because it's your money. It's not, it's not the sheriff's money. It's not the captain's money. It's, it's your money. And some of these are constitutional issues that we can't, we have to, the design, build team would have to overcome and, and address. So the goal in the proposal, if you haven't seen it, is to build an expansion that would include roughly 300 additional beds. Remember, we're at 477. That would take us another 300. Get us back to where we, where we have some room. The key to that is that it's the type of beds which we're gonna get into. So the proposal is to build 300, 300 beds in this expansion. Realize you have a very finite amount of room, roughly 60,000 feet, square feet, to build this. And so in a very, to us, a very small area, which is, which is actually connecting to our existing jail. So the first thing that the captain's gonna talk about is if you were to build an expansion, and I'm gonna back up just a little bit, our jail is a vertical building. It's two stories, which is not the standard in the industry. The standard in the industry is horizontal buildings. Although places like Las Vegas and Seattle have like 12, some 12-story buildings, which are very challenging for law enforcement to run a jail. So ours is a two-story building with lots of different staircases and, and corners and stuff that cause problems for inmates and staff. When you're in jail, we have, we are in charge of your care and custody. We're in charge of your medical needs. We're in charge of your clothing needs. We're in charge of your eating needs. So we have to clothe these folks by right, and that's, that's what we should be doing. We give them three meals a day. Under our agreement, we have to have our meals at a very certain degree or will be in violation of the federal order. We have to have certain things. So the meals, the medical, and all those, all those inmates have to be able to have access to those things. Another thing that they have to have access to is outdoor recreation. And we're gonna talk a little bit about that, but just keep in the back of your mind, outdoor recreation means each inmate by Idaho Jail Standards is entitled to one hour of outdoor recreation five days a week. Okay? Under our ACLU agreement, they require one hour a day, seven days a week. So right now, we have to give, if we were maximum capacity, we'd have to give 477 people outdoor recreation five to seven days a week. If we add 300 more people, they too have to have outdoor recreation or we're in violation of the federal agreement. So the captain and I want to make sure that if you have a question, please raise your hand. We encourage questions. We have a little bit of a script we're gonna follow. It's kind of chronological, but we'll address your questions as we go so you don't forget them at the end of it. If the questions get too lengthy, in essence of time, we'll ask to hold those questions after a while and then move on to the next subject matter. So Captain, did we, I know you got staffing as the first thing. Did we talk about the building itself being the same building?
No, we did not.
I think I'll start with that.
Absolutely.
Here's one thing that I'm very, very concerned of. I've been very, not shy about saying it into the public's eye. I'm very concerned. Realize we're five years into a federal consent decree. Five years we have been, we have spent, truly, we have written hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in checks to the ACLU. But overall, it's really cost us millions of dollars with what legal, legal matters and overtime and all these things. You can, you can see our investment. The first thing that I came up with when I, when I heard that they wanted to expand this building, you have to mention, is connected. So if this is existing jail, this is going to connect to that existing jail. That means it becomes the same building. Right? Well, if it's the same building, the day we open the door, it's under a federal consent decree. We don't get to say, "There's an independent building. It's brand new. It's independent." That, that doesn't work. It's the same building, so the attorneys will tell. One in its military. That worries me as a taxpayer. It worries me as your sheriff, because there's no way out from under it. We've been five years and we're still not out from under it. And there are some things that we do not feel that we can change. Neither does maintenance of the building. The building is just poorly constructed. So with that, I'm gonna have the captain talk for a few minutes about one of our, outside of that concern, and we have many. I don't know how you overcome that. Okay? I'm very concerned about that. The second thing on our list is staffing. Captain?
Sure. And if you'll click ahead one slide. We'll talk a little bit about staffing. You figure, in a couple of slides, we'll show a picture of what they proposed plan looks like. With this plan, there's two separate levels. So like the sheriff had mentioned, kind of the, the standard anymore is one horizontally built building to allow less people to watch a greater number of inmates. This proposed plan has two separate levels. So with that, two separate levels, I have a control pod in the middle. And go ahead and go up two slides so I can kind of show them. This is a deputy stationed control pod. These are four living units around that. So this is one floor. Then there's another separate floor on top of it. So it essentially doubles the amount of deputies it takes me to watch that amount of inmates. So there are 224 dorm-style beds proposed with 96 hard cells. Like the sheriff had said, we have had eight homicides since December. In the valley. Part of them are housed in our custody. Part of them we have in Ada. At one point, we had people in Ada, Ojaihe, Jim, and Payette, and ours, because we had co-defendants. And I have one maximum security unit presently. So, and I'm sure the sheriff will point this out at times, there are good things to have more beds. We're not saying that we don't need more beds. We're just saying this isn't the correct plan to get to there. So with this, with the configuration we have, I need eight deputies to run that shift. I presently, to watch the 477 possibility of inmates, we have a minimum staffing of 13 on a team. I have to add eight more to add another approximately 300 beds. So to get 24/7 coverage, because as you all know, the jail never closes, to get 24/7 coverage, pretty just deputies to get round-the-clock coverage, just to give people a relief factor. There's always gonna be somebody going to training. There's gonna be somebody that's calling in sick. You have to allow people to have vacation. So we have to have enough coverage to make all of that. And that's kind of pointed out. Some of the other things that will go along with it, as you can see in medical, there is a, a medical wing or a medical suite to add on to this jail, which is something that's also very well, very much needed. But with the addition of that 300 more inmates, we would need another five personnel in medical, an RN, three LPNs, and an MA. And at least in, Lieutenant Miller is over our medical section. In our estimation, these are very conservative numbers. We're not, I'm not positive they can make that all happen with those numbers, but it should be pretty close. Did you want to jump in there?
Go ahead.
Our supply, like the sheriff said, we, we have to give them all their clothes. We have to launder those clothes on a regular basis. Same thing with their linens, everything. Our supply deputy gives them everything from their toothbrushes, everything. So I need a couple of more deputies. There are three deputies or two deputies and a corporal in supply currently. We'd have to add a couple more of those. Classifications is a huge, huge item that we have three, two deputies and a sergeant who manage classifications right now. It's, it's a very full-time job to make sure we're not putting the wrong people together. Like the sheriff said, the safety and security of that inmate while they're in there, they're in our hands. We have to make sure they're safe when they're in there.
Can I interrupt for just a second?
Absolutely.
And just to expand on that, those, those of you who are not in law enforcement, you shouldn't, you wouldn't be expected to know this. But if we have a rival gang member, so a Norteño, if you see someone wearing red as a gang member, that's Norteño typically. If they're wearing blue, that's Cerreño. Well, we can't have them in the same unit because they're mortal enemies by the gang culture. Right? That's, that's part of it. If two Norteños or three commit a crime, a conspiracy, whether it's drug trafficking, whether it's conspiracy to commit murder, whether it's conspiracy to do a drive-by shooting, they're co-defendants. So we have to house them all separately because we can't, the attorneys certainly don't want them talking to each other before we get to court. Right? And so when we talk about co-defendants, that's just a real simple explanation of what that is. And that, there's a broad variety, but that kind of gives you an idea. And that goes back to our classifications. If, if you're a, if we're gang members and we're kind of violent guys, you're not gonna put us with the people who have a DWP driving without privileges. Because we're gonna run that unit. That's just the way it goes. Because that's our culture. That's our mentality. And so we have to be very careful how, this classification is incredibly important doctrine of what we do at the jail. Sorry, Captain.
No, that's all right. The last one on this list is, is the mailroom personnel. Maybe you guys don't realize, every piece of mail that comes in gets scanned, make sure there's not something going to the inmates that shouldn't go to them. Every piece of mail that goes out has the same thing. Right now, we have one person. I can tell you, I have no idea how she keeps up with everything. She listens to phone calls, monitors visits, reads every piece of mail and is able to keep up on it. I don't know if one more person can do it, but that's what we're gonna estimate is one more person to be able to keep up with that. Did you want to talk about?
Yeah, I did. And, and I do wanna, I wanna keep making as many clarifications as I can. What we're showing you tonight is based on the conception that we were handed, the conceptual drawings. Today, when we did our meeting, when, on RFQ process, we saw some more conceptual drawings. And the press was there, so that's, that's public information. These are conceptions. They're not actual hard design yet, because we haven't got to that phase. But what we asked, when we looked at, how many staff is it gonna take? When we said, "Hey, 50 additional personnel," like the captain's explained, that's your deputies, and then, of course, your support staff. So we asked the controller and the clerk of the county to run some numbers and say, "If we had to have additional 30 people, 30 full-time employees, 30, not 50, what would that, what would that look like?" And so these are the numbers, and I don't have a slide. I apologize. So the day you open that facility, you gotta have 30, let's say 30, say we're wrong. And we'll go really conservative, 30 instead of 50. Full-time wages, full-time benefits, et cetera. Their estimated cost, that your annual increase in our budget, that money has to come from somewhere, is $2.5 million to start. $2.5 million for those 30 employees. That's over and above our, our, our costs today. They looked at a 3.5 inflationary percentage annually, is what they looked at. Say you're going to give people, your employees a 3% raise or cost of living allowance, whatever it is. This is their numbers. And I tell you this because they're startling numbers. If you get to year 10, you will have paid out $29.3 million. $29.3 million, just in, just in 30 people's wages and salaries and benefits. If you get to year 15, you will have paid out $48.2 million. I am confident, and, and I haven't got to this part of my conversation. Like I say, I think you should do nothing versus do this. But if you were to look 10 years down the road, five years down the road, 15 down, years down the road, build yourselves a jail, you can build a jail for $48 million. Don't take the next 15 and put it into salaries when we don't need that staff. We need that staff to run this. And we're gonna talk a little bit about this when we get to what we believe is a viable option. Doesn't have to be the only option. But we believe if you built a jail today on the land that we own, 600, 800-bed facility, we may be overstaffed. Why would we be overstaffed? We may be overstaffed or within a range of minus four, plus four, five, because a new jail will be economically built. It'll be properly designed. You'll have one, you'll have half as many people watching twice as many inmates because of the design of the, of the control pods and the transferring of inmates. Those are staggering points. We do not believe you want to spend $48 million when that would purchase your new jail. You're the taxpayers. This is your money. Those are numbers from the county clerk and the county controller. But we'll come back to that, but I did want to point it out.
Well, and just, just to build on to that, those are numbers that never go away. Once that jail is built, until something else is built, we have that many deputies. Right now, and I'm hoping, as of Monday of this week, we had 13 openings for sworn deputies.
Detention.
Detention deputies. So with that, I have nine over at the post academy right now. We have eight in training. And like I said, 13 openings. So I have 30 deputies that are on staff. Not 30. When we do a testing process, we put out, advertise applications come in. Typically, when we test, we have between 75 and 125 applicants. Once they take the written test and the physical test, they do the same day. At the next part of the process is a oral board. During that oral board, we usually drop down to about 35-ish people. From that 35 in the oral board, a few of them drop down to where they're not a viable candidate we're going to look at. But out of that, starting 75 to 125, we may hire six or eight people. We are not going to drop, you know, law enforcement should be the people that you, I've gotta make sure that they pass the standards of just their background investigations. Like I said, it goes from 125 down to about six people. So what our chief deputy had estimated for us to hire 30 people, was it two years? If, if we could find two 30 people, it would take about two years to get them on staff and get them trained. So it's very problematic of, do I start hiring them now? But then what do I do with them during the meantime? Because the jail's not done for two years, somewhere in that timeframe. Or do I wait till I have nine months before it opens? Where is that point? It's just very problematic to figure out where to hire those people.
And the hiring process is very rigid, and it should be. It's law enforcement. This is who you trust your lives to. We are the point of the spear. As a matter of fact, your chief, police department, sheriff's office, we are the point of the spear. It's a four-month process to get someone hired. Get through all of that. If we do hire them, we're going to put them into 23 weeks of training. They're not working, they're not, they're not really a viable employee to us in terms of, "Here, I'm gonna turn this guy loose for 23 weeks." And from the day we hire them, the process to hire them, to one year is about a $70,000 investment of that employee. $70,000. So it takes so long to hire them. And quite frankly, and, and the chief would certainly agree with this, the chief, Chief Allgood, Sheriff Rainey, all of us are in the same, the same boiling pot. There's only a finite number of people who qualify to work in law enforcement, a finite number. number. And we're all competing for the same guys, aren't we, chief? Every single one of us wants that guy or that girl to work for us. And so a finite number of applicants, and we've got to make sure that we get them, or the chief, or the sheriff over here, or Meridian, or, or, you know. So we believe, well, we have numbers of 50, we believe 30 is undoable. And again, so if you build a building and we can't staff it, you have a 13 and a half million dollar paperweight. That's just one possibility. Because we can't open the door if we can't staff it, I'm telling you. Your, the exposed liability would be too, too extreme.
One little video clip that is playing here, part of the, part of the issue. This is our briefing room that you're seeing right there. We have a training session going on. There is nothing else in the plan. It is, it is strictly in addition to the jail, but there's nothing to, to add any more room for us to, if I have another 40 deputies, for us to add those 40 deputies in there, you can see we're already kind of stacked up every, everybody on top of each other. There's some clips later on that show some of our admin areas and some of the issues with that, adding any more people into there is going to be a little difficult to get everybody in place.
That, and, and that's just our, that's just our, obviously, our briefing room and our training room. Uh, in the proposed conceptual drawings, that room would go away. That room would go away, so we have nowhere to brief our staff. And we brief twice a day as we change our shifts. So that's just one, one little thing that we'd have to be aware of. Again, can it be overcome? It can be overcome with design, but when we get talking about the 300 beds, anything that has to be changed in that conception lowers that number of potential new beds. You've got to have to have a training room, you're going to have to have some bathrooms, you're going to have certain things that we'll talk about. So that, uh, now your next clip, I believe, is on your transport.
It is. If you go ahead to the next clip. Actually, back up one to that transport slide. So one of the, one of the reasons for needing the additional staffing, we have to transport inmates, and I'm not talking about transporting them to Ada County. I'm talking about getting them from their housing unit to the outdoor recreation area or to medical or to court, to booking, whichever they need to do. There's only an outdoor recreation area on the second level of the proposal. So everybody on the first level, if you can just picture, go back one slide, please. Sorry. If you can picture, I'm on the second floor and I'm the inmate that lives in this cell right here. This is a, a higher security living unit. We bring that inmate out, we put them in belly chains and leg irons, and we'll have a video to show that here in a minute. But I have to take them then down the hall, possibly a two-deputy escort, depending on their classification level. They go down the hallway here, around, down into the outdoor recreation area, whichever one of these that it is. So it just, it reinforces the point, I can't have the deputies that are working the unit because I can't leave the unit unmanned. I've got to have additional personnel that haul them out of there back and forth.
And I don't think it can be overstated, Captain. That's, if they simply get called down to, to booking. If I, if I'm a, a alleged homicide suspect, and the captain's going to show you this, it's a two-man escort. Two people have to leave wherever they are, go to, go to my cell, pull me out, put belly chains and leg irons on me, and escort me to booking. And stay with me till we're done, and then they've got to escort me back. Those two men are out of play for the rest of, of the work that's going on. This is, we do this hundreds of times. I mean, it's, it's this normal activity for us. Can I get those lights, please?
Well, go ahead and show the video, like you, like the sheriff had said. We'll start out, it's showing some of the higher security living units. So you can see some of the higher security living units here, all individual cells, possibly two people in the cell. I know the proposed plan has all two-person cells, which is good and bad. There's, there's mixed emotions with that. But if we continue on, any of these people here will come out of their cell, couple of deputies will escort, escort them over to a wall where we can put them in belly chains, leg irons, and then two deputies.
Pause it again. The reason I'm pausing it, Captain, is that when we talked about the control deputy's pod, this is the control deputy's pod. He's viewing, or he and she, this is a two-man unit to, to be in the control unit there typically. They're watching all these inmates, both sides, and monitoring and getting people to court and getting them to medical and letting nurses come up and see these people and keeping these people away from them. This is what that deputy, so that's a pod. That deputy cannot leave there because this, this chaos would ensue, obviously. So that just gives you an idea of being inside of there.
The, the other thing with that, that, that deputy does leave the pod, he goes into each one of these housing units. Our, our policy is every 20 minutes, they go through, check the welfare of every inmate every 20 minutes. So as you can see here, we have an inmate that's getting belly chains and leg irons to go to court. They'll have these put on, then we escort them down the hall. This particular one goes onto an elevator, but it just depends on where they're going. And it, every one of these depends on the classification level of that particular inmate. Do I need two deputies to escort it, escort them, or can we escort them with one? And just, just to be completely honest, we have our, our minimum security people that we say, follow the green line down to booking, and they watch themselves. We have cameras showing, so our, our control room operator can watch them if they stop and start doing something.
You saw where the elevator had the supply deputy coming out of the supply with a, with a cart. So as this person's being transported, uh, the time slows down because they have to wait for the laundry cart to come off the elevator, so the deputies and the inmate can get on the elevator to go down to booking. So the process can take six to seven minutes, or it can take 10 to 15 minutes. And there's hundreds of inmates, and movement is constant. So we have to be, be cognizant that, uh, how you design a jail is very, very important to what we do inside that jail. The functionality and operation is far different than. Uh, next thing we're talking about is outdoor recreation. I, I talked about this just a little bit. Uh, the captain's pointed out, it's a requirement for us, or we've pointed out it's a requirement. And what our concern is with the new proposal, the conceptual, how do we possibly get 300 people to outdoor rec one hour a day under our guidelines and, and basically under our decree? We, you've done the math many, many times, we've looked at it many, many ways, and we can't get there from here. I'm going to let you talk about how, what your math shows.
Sure. So if you picture back to that, the, the proposed conception plan, there were 48 hard cells there. Two people in each of those cells. We may be housing two people, may only be housing one person, it depends on what their classification level is. I'll tell you that we, I've not put in two homicide suspects in the same cell, I'm not putting two aggravated battery suspects. You know, it, it really just depends, like the sheriff had kind of indicated there, most likely one person in each of those cells. But either way, there's 48 hard cells, they get one hour per day. Then in the dorm-style housing units, I have, uh, each, there are four dorms of 56 inmates each. We don't allow more than 20 people to go out at any one time, just for security reasons. You get more than that out there, it becomes unmanageable. So I need three rotations for each of those living unit. So between the two, I need 60 hours to run one complete rotation of all the inmates on this proposed plan. We have two recreation yards, so that takes 30 hours to do one rotation. It's hard to do 30 hours in one 24-hour period, so.
I've been lying to them for years because I ask them to work 30 hours in a 24-hour period, but they keep, you know, pushing back on me, but now this kind of takes my hair out of my sails. So I've been lying to you guys, I expect a lot, sorry.
This, uh, this little video clip just shows, shows you guys, a lot of you haven't seen the inside of our jail, if you can play that one to, to show, um.
Thankfully, you have not been inside of our jail is what he meant to say.
Exactly. Uh, this is what an outdoor recreation area actually looks like. You have, there's just a little posting on the wall that shows, this is some things you can do out here. And it's a big cement box, if you guys haven't seen it, with a chain link type roof.
The importance of that, part of the importance of that too, is there's a square footage requirement that we're held to by Idaho jail standards, that it has to be 1,500 square feet for the inmate to go out and participate in outdoor recreation. So we're held to that standard, and we don't get to cheat on that, that, you know, we, it's 1,500 square feet, if you don't get to cheat. So you can imagine how many people, you know, you could put out, they're only a limited number, or, and we've had chaos out there. So outdoor recreation is very, very critical to us.
You know, and like the sheriff had said, we are, we're currently under that consent decree, which none of us know truly when we'll be out from under that consent decree, but the consent decree does state it's one hour a day, seven days a week. Jail standards do say one hour a day, five days a week. I'll tell you that I've told all of my staff, even when ACLU consent decree goes away, I'm not changing back to trying to juggle a schedule to where I can say once every five, or five days a week, they get it. It's much easier to continue on. If someone happens to miss something, we'll, we'll deal with that at that point.
And let me add some to that, Captain. Here's my concern, and I, I, I meet with our attorneys, we meet with our attorneys almost every day, if not two or three or four times a day. There are four civil attorneys that work for the prosecuting attorney's office. Those are our lifeline, and two of those, one is specifically assigned to us with ACLU issues, specifically assigned to us because ACLU. And he's great, they're great, but they are our lifeline, believe me. That exposed liability to the taxpayer goes from me to the taxpayer. If, if I get sued, you get sued, right? So what I really get concerned about when, in these conceptual drawings, and I saw some more today, unless you can prove to me that you can get those 300 people out to that outdoor rec, it doesn't matter to me that you can get 250 out. Because if there's 50 people that don't get outdoor rec in that six-hour block, that 30 minus 24, that's 50 lawsuits a day, a day. And we will lose. We will absolutely lose, hands down, it's been proven, and we will be in violation every single day, and that's a new tort claim. Times 50, or times 10, or times 100, whatever that number is, that should, that sends shudders, shivers up my spine because I have to deal with it every day with the attorneys. How do we overcome that?
Just to point out one more time on this, like it said, if you happen to live in that cell, I bring you out, I escort you down, now we're on the first floor and through the second floor, I'm in belly chains and leg irons, so I put you in the elevator with two deputies, I take you up to the second floor, you'll click ahead one, Andy. I get out of, out of the elevator, walk down, put you into the rec yard. Hour later, I'm picking you up, bringing you back, picking up another inmate, bringing them back. So it just lends to the amount of deputies that it takes to make that. If a, a, a well-designed facility would have something where that person can come directly out, the person in the control pod can watch them and they walk straight over, go into the rec yard. That is one of the well-designed plans of our current facility, and I probably could count the well-designed things on one hand.
The, the picture we showed you of outdoor rec, the picture we showed just a moment ago, that literally is outside the deputy pod. So the inmate comes around the deputy pod, the, the deputy watches him, he goes out the door into the outdoor rec, when he's done, he comes back in and goes to his cell. That is one of the few things that they, they got right. This is not right. This is incredibly staff intensity, incredibly time intensity, uh, and we, we'd have to overcome that. We'd have to overcome that in the design phase. And I keep saying that because at the end, I'm going to tell you, if we overcome all the issues we, we're telling you about, your 300 beds is probably going to shrink to about 80 beds. And then you've got to figure out what's the cost per bed that you're buying. Just keep that in mind. I could be off by 10 or 12.
That's true.
Oh, this kills, kills me. If I'm an inmate, I have a constitutional right to see my attorney. Do we all agree with that? That is your right and by, you know, again, we are not the judge and jury, people. We are, we are the housing people. We, we house inmates. We certainly aren't the judge and jury. The chief and I, as, as executives in law enforcement, we are not the judge and jury. These are alleged crimes until proven guilty in a court of law, right, chief? Or you plead guilty and you're, and it's adjudicated. So you have the right to meet with your attorney. That's your constitutional right. Today, we have four attorney-client visit areas. Now, we don't let attorneys, including public defenders, unless it's a special case, if they're preparing for a trial, we'll get that attorney a face-to-face with his client or her client in a special room. That's kind of unusual. Otherwise, they, they come to outside of our jail, through our main visitation area, they go up some stairs or an elevator, and they go to their side of the glass, and we'll show you that. Uh, do you want to, do you want to move to that? Well, hold on just a second. So, e- either way, so then the, the inmate is escorted, usually in his living unit. This is the route the attorney would have to take to, whether it's a public defender or a private attorney, and he has to get up, go up the stairs through our visitation, go down this hallway, either to the female's living unit or the men's living unit, and go to the prescribed, uh, glass area where they talk through the glass or on a phone or through the talk-through, and they pass information back and through, back and forth. And that's one of the areas there. So that happens all day long, every day. And by rights, of course, they, they, they have that right. My concern in the proposals, and I saw three more today, this wall, the, the hallway that Andy just showed you, that's the new wall of the new expanded building. So all of our attorney-client visits go away. Under the proposed conceptual drawings, there are no more attorney-client rooms. There are no more attorney-client rooms. So not only do your 477 inmates not get to see their attorneys, that's 477 lawsuits a day, the new 300 people don't get their attorney-client visit either. You've got to overcome that. Lights, please. If, if you, you've got to overcome that. So if to overcome it, you're going to say, well, in the new proposed conceptual drawing, instead of 300 beds, we'll take out 40 or 10 or whatever that number is and build some attorney-client visit rooms. You have to, because you cannot, and if you do that, what about my other 477? There's no place in the old jail to build an attorney-client room. That's 477 lawsuits a day constitute, deprive me of my constitutional rights. You have to be thinking bigger, people. Your design people have to be thinking down the road because you will break this county. And I, as a taxpayer, take off my sheriff hat, do not do that to me. Because if I, if I'm the judge, and I'm not, if I'm the judge and you come in and say, well, your honor, uh, the plaintiff says that we took away their constitutional right. Well, did you know that was going to happen before you built it? Yes, sir, we did know. Well, I roll in favor of the plaintiff. I mean, how dumb is that? So you've got to overcome that part, you have to. And we've been telling people, we told the designers, you're going to have to overcome that. You can't, you can't do that to us. So that one really, you know how much we already fight with the public defender? I mean, God bless them, and they do a job, and by God, if, if we're accused of a crime and we can't afford an attorney, I want that public defender there on my side too. But, you know, you've got to overcome it. You cannot take that constitutional right from these folks, and you shouldn't. How dare you do that? Do you want anything to add on that?
All right, two slides, Andy. So on the second floor, this, to reiterate what the sheriff said, this hallway that you can see right here is the hallway that was on that video. That hallway gets incorporated into the main jail is why I, we don't allow attorneys just back inside the main jail for security reasons, both theirs, ours, inmates, everybody's. But that hallway becomes the main route that I'm an inmate over here, I'm going to come down, I can walk through this way around here and over to the courthouse. So that hallway is completely gone, and like the sheriff had said, in this proposed plan, both neither the first or the second floor have any kind of an attorney visit room on them. have any kind of an attorney visit room on them. We actually have to use this one.
Okay. Currently, and ladies, please don't throw anything, it's not my fault. I did not build the building in 1993, I just operate it today. The, the captain has roughly 54 administrative and deputy staff, not just administrative staff, but men and women who work in his, let's say administrative area outside part of the time of the secure facility. That means your ad techs who are, who are typically ladies who do our book-in process and keep our records, uh, our civilian secretaries, our courts and transport people, uh, who are commissioned deputies, our alternative sentencing people who are both men and women who are not commissioned deputies, some are not commissioned deputies. Well, basic human need is you gotta use the bathroom, right? That's basic human need. So unfortunately, when they built this building in 1993, they only put one female stall in the bathroom. And right next to that bathroom, we have one male stall and one male urinal for 54 personnel. We're already out of compliance, we know that, we've been told that. So far, no one sued us lately, today, uh, that I saw, 54 people. If you build this, do you have a slide to show that? Would you go to the next slide, please?
We can either show that clip of the video or the next slide we'll show.
If you built, if this, if this proposed expansion, this is part of our administrative, the captain's administrative staff. It's kind of tied in here. If you've ever never been over there, it's a wonderful thing to go see. We're packing there like sardines, there's no more room for expansion on some of this. So as this comes around, you'll see a hallway to where the, the, the people use, uh, the bathrooms are, are located, which is right next to that briefing room I told you about that would go away. Uh, if, uh, if the expansion is under this conception, if the expansion is built. Well, it's the same hallway, so those bathrooms go away. No attorney-client visit, no briefing room, no bathrooms. And in all the plans I've seen, including today, no one has showed me that they're, where they're going to build bathrooms in the new expansion, any bathrooms outside of the inmates' bathrooms. So I have two problems with that. I'm pretty sure people are going to have to use the bathroom every day. I'm pretty confident on this one. And if I'm an administrative staff, hold that right there. If I'm an administrative staff, like the lady that stands right here, and the only bathrooms are in the secure facility, you're going to tell me as a civilian, and I'm a lady or a man, I've got to walk into a secure facility jail to use the bathroom? I don't think we're going to get sued, but I'm pretty sure we're going to get sued. You have to overcome that. In your design, you have to overcome that. I'm pretty sure ADA is not going to let you slide on this one, pretty sure of it. These are basic concepts, people, and someone has to be thinking about it. Human needs, and we're not going to expect, I don't know, we probably have 30 civilian women, uh, ad techs. I am not going to ask one of those ladies to walk into that secure facility. She is not a commissioned officer, she has not had the training Andy and I have had to go in there and use the bathroom? And what happens when the first woman gets assaulted in there? I don't think there's any exposed liability to the county. Are you kidding me? These things have to be overcome. So go back to that 300 beds. Well, you got to build attorney-client visit, you got to build outdoor rec and you got to build some bathrooms. So how many beds you got left to build this? Do you see where I'm going with that? You can't do that to people. You, you, we, we wouldn't do it to you, we can't do it to our staff. So I, I don't know if you want to add on to that, that, that fires me up. That no, no, today, no one could answer me, where's the bathrooms in your new proposed drawing? Uh, we haven't got there yet, okay?
In, in the proposed plan, like the sheriff had said, this is the administrative bathrooms right here that I'm pointing out. If you can see a dark spot on the wall, the proposed plan was to block that off from jail staff, admin staff. Open the wall on the other side because it's the public lobby on this side and you have to have restrooms for the public lobby. So we opened it up to them, which in turn causes all of the administrative staff to go back inside of the main facility, use the restroom back inside of there somewhere. Like the sheriff had pointed out, I, I did a little research for OSHA, it does not meet OSHA standards. I'm sure there's many other ones that it doesn't meet.
ADA.
Just, just one of those that they, that we have to overcome.
And I apologize for being facetious, but I, I do get a little slanted. This business calls you to be slanted at times, I apologize in advance. But these are basic things and I just think we have to be smarter than that. And again, that exposed liability that the prosecuting attorney reminds me of every day, what's our exposed liability, what's our exposed liability, what's our exposed liability? Litigation, litigation, litigation. We are the caretakers of your money as well, and that's, that's what worries me. Cause that's what you hired us to do. And so we're going to be very adamant about how we protect that. I've got, so along, I'll let the captain talk about that. Captain, tell us what protected custody inmates are.
Sure. And actually, go, go back two slides, Andy. Protective custody inmates are usually a, an inmate that's charged with some sort of a sex crime. Could be just a person who does not feel at ease in the jail. There's many reasons a personal get put on protective custody, primarily sex crimes. Because even in jail, that's worse than another crime in, in the inmate's mind. The reason we bring this up, it's kind of hard to see on this picture, but this, this area right here is the current, we call it Pod 4. From right about here over is the living unit, we call it Mary Unit. That unit goes away with the addition of this jail. So that would propose the expansion. This is a medical facility that they were building on there. For this to happen with that to go away, I lose 35 protective custody beds. As, as a jail commander, that forces me to call another jail or, or one of my staff to call another jail and say, can we house some protective custody inmates in your jail? So two different times, because last year in, uh, so in March of 2014, we conducted a survey of Ada County, Elmore County, Adams-Payette, Jim, Oahehe, and Washington County. That was in March of 2014, when this first proposal to come out with a, an expansion commissioners had set forth. We sent out a survey, we could house six to eight inmates out of county at that point. Out of 35 beds, 35 inmates I need to house out. I got a, a commitment to six to eight inmates. So even if we could house those six or eight inmates, it's somewhere between $45 a day and $72 a day, just depends on which jail we send them to.
To the taxpayer.
To the taxpayer.
Over and above what we pay already. We have to pay that other county to house our inmates, that's your money, every day. And you, you, you can't overemphasize what protective custody is. And, and I know you didn't go to your next stat.
Sure.
That no one wants protective custody inmates. IDOC doesn't want protective custody inmates because they're very hard to handle, they're very, uh...
They're very labor-intensive.
Very labor-intensive because we have to protect them from each other and protect them from everyone else because other inmates look down on them for the crime they committed. You cannot overemphasize how, it's a very precarious living unit. Go to your next.
So, so we sent out another survey then in, uh, June. Or sorry, January, I can't read my own writing. Um, in January, we sent out another one. As soon as we sent it out, Ada County responds back saying, no, just can't do it. Which I, I can't blame them. The only person we had, or only agency we had respond back, Adams County said they could take two. So we're at now at two of our protective custody inmates. But even with that, if we have the ability somewhere to house these inmates, they still go to court, they still have appointments they got to go to. That other facility doesn't do that. So I have to have transport deputies that are driving to, say, Washington County or, you guys all realize Adams County is council. That's a long ways away. You can figure our transport deputy, if, if that person has a nine o'clock court, I've got to pick them up the night before. Cause I, I, I can't send someone out at three in the morning, say it's winter and I, who knows what the roads are going to be like between here and council. So we pick them up before, do whatever they need to do, take them back to there. It's just a, a ridiculous use of resources.
And labor-intensive, we don't have that kind of manpower yet. We'd have to hire more.
Absolutely.
Plus there's an expense to the county because we had to transport those folks. We had to have vans and vehicles and people, personnel to go do that. So that's a, that's a cost over and above housing that we're paying another county for. Those other counties are kind of liking that to us, by the way. I mean, they get, they get, uh, they get in, income. And, uh, if we were in a better position, we'd like that income too. We'd house for other folks, but we don't have that, that availability. So here again, that's something you have to overcome. And what am I, what you might have missed is that if, if, if we, if, under the proposed expansion, we just lost 30 beds, 30.
35.
35 beds, we just lost 35. So your 300 minus 35 is where you're going to start. Cause you, you're starting with a negative 35, which then it leads us into the next.
Well, and you actually, we're going to talk about the annex there.
Yes, sir.
So like you, like sheriff had pointed out, you automatically lose those 35 beds for protective custody beds. The commissioners have also said the old annex was the, which was the 1948 jail that we are still using. We use 34 beds or we have the ability to use 34 beds in there. 20 of them we use all the time, that's our male inmate worker population. We always use those beds. And then we have one other floor that's kind of our old maximum security unit that is another 14 beds that we have the ability to use. As you can imagine, a 1948 jail, it's kind of exceeded its, its life expectancy. Lots of issues, we constantly have plumbing issues. We try to keep it up just in case we have to use it. But our maintenance guys are in and out of there constantly trying to fix something. There's always a leak, there's, uh, we finally shut down one floor three years ago, if I remember right, to turn it into video visitation or video arraignment. Because the steel pipes that were buried in concrete, the steel pipe was gone. It had rotted away and now I just have sewage, water, everything going through a hole in the concrete. And then it's leaking down from this floor to the next floor to the next floor. So we were finally able to get that one shut down, but we're in the need to do that with all of the floors there. The county does have plans to make that because the courthouse is built all the way around that. And so much of the electrical and cabling goes right through the middle of that building. The plans are is to reutilize that for some sort of a storage, uh, record storage, something like that. Just not to house inmates.
Rightfully so.
Exactly. Sheriff, I don't know if you want to open it up, see if there's any questions. We have a few more.
Any questions so far? I mean, I'm, uh, yeah, I don't want anyone to forget a question they had on a topic we've already covered, so. Uh, so you have two options. We can talk to you about some of the questions you have on the topics we've already covered or we can go, uh, councilman?
Sheriff Donahue, uh, we were starting this earlier about the possibility of inmate rights being violated. Have they explained to you how they plan on building on this addition without violating their rights?
No, sir.
Do you see that as a problem?
Oh, absolutely. And, and, and I think what that would come to, councilman, I think that would come down to the design bill team once the, the award is given to a design bill team. And I do believe that will happen by May 1st. Quite frankly, the, the wheels are in motion, the county's spending money already on that. Uh, that's one of those things that, that, and it's, we can't sit down, like you and I can't sit down with the three proposed design bill teams because no one's been awarded yet. It would be illegal for us to sit down and talk to them about those things. But we have invited them to meetings like this and we can talk to them about it in the, in the open. But in generalities rather, but you're going to have to overcome that. So I want to see from the design bill team, how are you going to overcome that? I want to see where's the attorney-client business going to be, because that's constitutional right. Human need, I want to see where the bathrooms are. I want to see how you avoid the Idaho jail standards and ACLU consent decree on outdoor recreation. I want to see those things. I want to see that because that's lawsuit on every single one of those and...
Will you also be talking about providing facilities later on in your presentation?
For, for food?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Have that anymore?
Yes, sir, we would. That's in the next section, you're absolutely right, thank you. Does that answer your question though? Because we, we really can't get into the nuts and bolts of it with the design team because it hasn't been awarded yet. Uh, but once it is, then that's something, that's where I believe that you're going to see that 300 bed potential shrink dramatically. And realize what the captain just said is we lost 35 protected custody beds and you're going to take another 34 protected, uh, annex beds for our inmate workers. Now you're, you're a negative 69 when you start. I'm not a math guy, but that's not, I, I, you just got to take into consideration. I'm not saying it won't work, I'm just saying, show me how we're going to work this out. Show me what you're going to give me for 13 and a half million dollars. How many beds and how much pressure you're going to relieve for 13 and a half million? And we've got more to talk to you about on that. If that answers your question adequately.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Sir.
Sheriff Donahue, I'm Randy Farber, criminal defense attorney, 35 hours, 36 years here in Napa, mostly misdemeanors.
Yeah.
I probably have a better class than you, because they tend to have more money. My question is, first of all, is there workout gap for female prisoners?
Oh, that's an excellent question. Is there work out?
For female prisoners?
Work release?
Yes.
Work release?
For female prisoners.
No.
Okay, so that's another lawsuit, right?
It could be, yes, sir.
Well, Andy, will the commissioner's plan, does it provide for that?
No, sir.
So.
And we haven't got to that part of the presentation yet, but we will.
You're talking about lawsuits and so that's another one that you're looking at.
That's a really great question, uh, and thank you for asking it. And I don't want to jump ahead, but...
No, that's fine, but I just...
You're right.
You're telling me that the commissioner's plan does not have a provision for that. So even if we build it, you...
You're correct.
Thank you.
And we'll get to that with, and so other people outside of yourself understand what work release is. We'll talk about that and the lack of that capability today for our female population and for the future.
In the, in the commissioner's plan?
In the proposed conceptual plan, yes, sir. But, and that's excellent question, it is something we're going to talk about. I'll just try to not skip ahead.
Mayor Hinner?
Uh, mayor?
Sheriff, you, you talked about all of these issues that will have to be resolved. Couldn't this process, um, bring you to the forefront that this won't work?
It could.
You're not going to start pouring concrete until it passes all of these tests. And so they could award it to a contractor, go through this process. And unless all of these issues are resolved, I doubt that anybody's going to get an order to proceed. And so, I mean, I mean, I would love to take that.
Okay.
And so through this process, couldn't it ultimately, um, be determined that it's not feasible?
Absolutely, mayor, thank you. And that's an excellent comment and an excellent question. It is, and we have talked about that at length with our legal staff, uh, and even in, in private discussions. It could, it could do that. Now, my fear, and, and I'm not, I mean, my fear, and you just brought it out, is it could show that those things, A, they couldn't be resolved, A. Or B, they did get resolved and it reduced that number of beds. And like you just said, this just isn't going to work, it's not feasible. And there has been great discussion by the commission, by us to collectively, publicly, saying, you know, we may find that this isn't going to work. I would love to see that happen and, and I, I don't, I don't have a vote in it. I don't have a vote in spending the money. We've already hired an outside owner's representative to, to guide us if, if, when it's awarded, if it's awarded. It looks like it will be awarded, so that owner's rep will, will help protect our interests as a county. Ken Fisher, well, proposed to, to protect our interests. But if a company is designed, is designing it, what's that cost? What's the design cost to show me that it won't work? I've gotten numbers from legal that is 600 to, 600,000 to a million dollars. Well, okay, fair enough. If there's 600,000 to a million dollars to show that we're going to have to save 13 and a half million, I have some heartache with that, but I don't have a vote to stop that. I think the people have a vote to stop that. So having said all that, mayor, my concern would be, those issues are addressed, the number of potential beds come down, everybody understands the concerns we have and is this, is that it may not be a long-term solution? It's a band-aid on a flowing artery. And then there's three commissioners and they're the ones that are going to make this decision whether it goes forward or not. So we don't have a say in that. And that's why, that's really the purpose of this type of a meeting, because you all should have a say. I think my position's pretty clear. The mayor is 100% right that the process could show that it's not feasible, but the end decision still has to be made by three individuals. Is, is that a fair statement? Ma'am?
I'd like to know what county commissioners are.
Well, ma'am, I, that, uh, I can't speak for them. Our invitation obviously was, was made public and so... Uh, councilman?
I have another question. Obviously, you've not been able to hear all the decrees from the court, is that correct?
Okay, I, I got to make sure I understand correctly.
There were so many items on that decree that we have to correct.
Stipulations.
That we have to correct in the current judge we have now.
Right.
We've completed... We've completed all of them except for how many?
So under the original consent decree from two thousand nine, started out with seventeen, we're at five right now.
We still have five.
There are five that are currently in, in, we're under right now. I can tell you, and I, I, I can't go real in depth because it's attorney client. We're in the process of filing the paperwork to get back in front of the judge to get out from under that consent decree. But is that process two months or is it two years? We don't know that. That's what's.
Okay. Understanding that, will this new facility or this add-on help us at all to be able to clear those stipulations? So we're still going to have to live with those.
Absolutely would have to. And I'll tell you what the stipulations are, just so you can understand. I'll ask, I'll, I'll go through them. Outdoor recreation is one of them. To be able to show that we have offered outdoor rec to everyone seven days a week, one hour a day. That's one of them. This wouldn't change that because I'm not adding more rec yards, making it easier to get everybody to them. I have water temperature, water temperature, hot water temperature. When they walk over, push the button, needs to be between one hundred and one fifteen. Which I, I think if any of you think about, you go to your house, you turn the shower on. Do you jump in and it's between that temperature? No, you know, it's not. That's where we're at. I can tell you, and Lieutenant Keel just told, told me earlier today, in the last five days, the county has sunk a couple hundred thousand dollars into water boilers to get this into compliance. In the last five days, our deputies check water temperature three times a day at one sink and one shower in every living unit in the facility. In the last five days, we've had one out of that temperature range, which I think is absolutely amazing to be able to get that into there. We have two different conditions on ventilation. One of them on just the proper airflow throughout the facility. We have a, a independent auditor come in, test the airflow, how much airflow through each of the living units. They are in compliance with all of the standards to, to do that. So I'm pretty confident there. We have one on sanitation and this runs back to, uh, one of the original stipulations or original conditions. We could not prove that when inmate X left, that mattress was sanitized before inmate Y was issued that same, that mattress. So we've, we've put checks and balances in place to be able to show all of that happens. We've put video surveillance system throughout the jail. So if they say, you know, whichever inmate said when they left, they didn't clean their mattress, I can go back, pull that camera view up and show, yes, it did happen. So how many is that?
It's a lost count.
That was five. Was that four? We had two different, there's two different ones on ventilation. One of them is just a, a checkup on the airflow. One is just the general operation. There were some major issues. Um, if you can imagine a jail built for four hundred seventy-seven total people and you have seven hundred and fifty inmates in there, just the amount of people in there breathing, talking, doing everything. The, uh, moisture level was so high inside those living units. There was condensation running down the walls. There was rust forming on the ceilings. Uh, you know, and I, I wish we could have, or I would have brought some pictures of the condition of the jail at that point because it was horrendous. Since then, it, I don't want to say it's a nice place to live, but it's, it's as nice as a jail. Um, you know, it, it's clean. We, the showers have changed from the old painted ones to the stainless steel. So the conditions have been met. We're able to prove all these water temperatures. We have both the historical data of an electronic system monitoring the water temperatures. And like I said, deputies three times a day for the last two years, three years, going in manually taking the water temperatures. And we have all of that recorded. So we can show all of this stuff has been taken care of. But the addition of another jail on here doesn't alleviate any of those problems.
And just for a moment, visualize a deputy in a uniform, three times a day having to stand in each, every living unit shower and get wet to test that temperature. That's what our deputies do every single day. And they get wet in their uniform and they complete their twelve-hour shift. And we do that three times a day, every day in every living unit. So we can pacify the agreement. And we have to be able to make sure that they have that water temperature between a hundred and a hundred and fifteen, or we're in violation of the federal consent decree. It's, it's rugged and you know, co, I'll, I'll comment that the captain and the lieutenants and their staff and those staff before you took over are why we've reduced that to, to those twelve stipulations. The Kinnick County Sheriff's Office, not the sheriff and not Chris Smith before me, but the staff who have brought us to this compliance are amazing in what they've done and sacrificed just to work there, to be criticized and sued and so on and so forth, because they believe in the mission. So, you know, truly these, these men and women are, are amazing what they've come through. And so Debbie?
So are you saying that in a new jail, new jail environment, maybe not the addition that you're talking about? First and foremost, in the addition, are there not new showers?
There would be, yes.
There would be. And so this particular stipulation, are there mechanisms within the showers that they automatically test them that you can solve?
So i- in our current facility, there is an electronic monitoring system for the water temperatures. The problem occurred and so in two thousand nine, we entered into that consent decree. None of the staff in this room were involved in, um, negotiating that settlement or, or entering that consent decree. So there were some issues of at, at some point someone decided, let's put this electronic system in, that'll pacify that. Nobody asked the ACLU, is that okay? So after three years, we said, here's all the data that shows, yes, there's, there's a variance here and there. And I'll tell you, at the beginning, it was between a hundred and a hundred and six degrees, which is even more ludicrous to try to maintain that temperatures. We, we negotiated it up to a hundred and fifteen degrees after so much study of a hundred and fifteen degree water is not going to scald you if it hits you right then. And, and all kinds of data we looked at. But the issue was the way it was negotiated, they didn't approve that electronic monitoring. So for us to be able to prove we are in compliance, the, the decree said we will manually take temperatures. Now, there's been an argument for years, and the sheriff and I agree on this, that's not a deputy function.
Building, exit that building forever
Into a new.
Into a new facility. Because you can build this new addition, that, those showers are going to be fine. But we're not, we're still have four hundred and seventy-seven people in that building. And it's not fine. And it will never be fine because maintenance, as brilliant as our guys are, they cannot fix it. It cannot be done. Or we would have done it. And so the answer is at some point you got to count your losses and move on. And as a society, we've got to move on. Or we can just keep the thousands of dollars for a, a system that's broken. And no, it's a, to us, and I've said this many times, you can't artery, well, artery for some time. You put a shiny nickel on it, it's still flowing art. This, and remember you attach to, to the new buil, to the old building, it's the same building. And you're immediately under a federal consent. That's ludicrous to me. But, uh, does that kind of answer your question on the water? I want, I want to move forward because I don't, I don't want to, uh, as a question was asked on the food service. Uh, we have, uh, we, we've sent out RFP last year to a new food service provider. We're very happy with this food service provider. We have an old kitchen, it's building ninety-three. Uh, so we asked them if we were to increase our, your work capacity, your, your food capacity by three hundred, can you do it? Can you accommodate, uh, for this new influx in inmates? And the answer was yes, we can provide three square meals a day, the same quality that we're providing, but you're going to have to do some work in this kitchen because we're going to have to increase the capacity of the kitchen to provide. And remember folks, we don't just feed inside the jail. We feed across the street to the tent structure. And remember we have to keep our food at a certain temperature because we're under a federal consent decree. So we got to put it in our trays in the kitchen, put it in the truck, got to drive over there, unload it and get the inmates without dropping that temperature. That's a challenge. We do it every day, but it's a dang good, hard challenge. Juvenile, we don't, we do the juvenile food. So we got to get that across the street to those folks. We got to do our entire facility. And, uh, and what they're saying is, yeah, we can do it, but you're going to have, you're going to have to put some money. We don't know what that amount is, do we, Captain? You have to put some money into renovating this kitchen to accommodate those three hundred. Simple, simple stuff. It can be done. But, uh, remember that those food service providers are real partners of ours because they help us maintain the proper dietary nutrition levels that we don't get, uh, agreements or a lawsuit and of course temperature, which most people don't have to worry about temperature, but we do because we have federal consent decree. So, uh.
To add to that, if you, in the RFP, RFQ, which one is it?
RFP for there.
The RFP that, no, for the.
Oh, for the, excuse me, RFQ.
For, in the RFQ, it stated, we will not be doing anything in the current kitchen. That, that went out to all of the companies saying we did not need to do that. As all of you know, this elected official wasn't a part of that sending it out. The commissioner said, we do not need this. In talking to them, their reasoning was before we went into an ACLU consent decree, we had seven hundred fifty inmates in there. That kitchen fed seven hundred fifty inmates. But we didn't always have it at the right temperature in there. That was part of the reasoning to get to our consent decree. That's why our current provider said that the actual structure that we have back there is big enough to accommodate this. We, we need to move some of the, uh, make it more efficient to where I can get these trays in and out of there in a timely manner. So it's not a demolition of the kitchen. It is a reorganization and some new pieces of equipment. There are, our stoves in there and Eric, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe it was a seven, nineteen seventy-eight stove is one of our stoves in there. So I, I, for the life of me, I can't understand why we built a jail in, in, and to correct the sheriff, we built a jail in nineteen ninety-one.
Ninety-one.
It didn't open until nineteen ninety-three because it wasn't a good, it was a poorly constructed jail at that point. And there was a, a political uproar over the whole thing and a different sheriff got into office because he said, I will ban that jail. Anyway, we had a twenty-year-old basically stove put into a brand new jail and now we've been using it till present.
Uh, I wasn't born yet. Uh, but, uh, some of my kids weren't. Uh, I have mailroom as my next slide.
Yes. Oh, we do have just a little video showing what the kitchen looks like. Sorry about that.
These are inmate workers females. They work part of the day down there. Obviously we can't have the male inmate workers at the same time. These are what you would consider your trustees, people that are low enough classification inmate that, uh, they want to do something part of their day. So the county utilizes their services down in the jail. Constantly overseen by Lieutenant Miller and his staff and, and the kitchen staff as well. Is there more, is there more to that?
That was it. It was very quick little clip, just to show you kind of what the jail or the kitchen looks like right now. Um, just showing. Absolutely, Lieutenant.
With the, with the kitchen, part, part of the issue with the consent decree was the time that we were serving. We are, we are limited on the, um, the amount of time between, uh, when we feed somebody dinner and when we feed somebody breakfast. That's where the real time and the need for the redesign becomes problematic. Um, and it's, uh, not only is it ACLU, but as a jail standard says that we will feed them within a specific time. Well, when you're trying to feed seven hundred inmates, that was part of that consent decree was we weren't, um, needing that time, uh, break.
What the lieutenant was saying there, Idaho jail standard says there cannot be more than fourteen hours between the meals. So between dinner pass and breakfast, you cannot have more than fourteen hours. So to make all of those is a little bit difficult.
I have mailroom as our next thing. And I think we talked about this a little bit. We have one male lady. She's amazing. Uh, you don't want to get in her way. And she looks at the worst things that society and humanity has to offer. Cause everything in there, and everything comes through her and some things get trashed. Uh, legal documents go on to legal people, but the other stuff is like, oh boy, right? Cause people are confined and they do strange things. So, but to do that, we'd have to increase, uh, for an additional male person and a, and that's something I haven't, also haven't seen in these designs is what, where's the new mailroom, uh, expansion?
There, there's a very short little clip that shows the office.
That she's in.
That she is in. Um, I, I have to deliver mail to her often and I take it into her office and I look around thinking, I have no idea where to set this down because I don't know how she tracks anything. So I usually throw it on her, on her chair. So she has to see it. But we, we have to add another person in there. As you can see, there's barely room for the one person in there, much less to add another person.
So I'm going to, I'm going to rush ahead to, to, uh, this next, this next topic and it's, it's a really big pop, topic. And that is the, uh, the female population. We're, we're a county of two hundred thousand people. We have enough, uh, we have, we have sixty-two female beds. Sixty-two female beds that we use in a population of two hundred thousand people. Last year we had three homicide suspects that were female in one, three, and we housed them. But what's crazy about that, if you go to the, uh, to the, uh, to the video, when you're a homicide suspect, if you're a female or male, you have to go into solitary, uh, you have to have your single cell. And we have four of those. We had three homicide suspects. We have four cells. So really can't have too many more female suspects because we don't have any place to put you. Right? And the rest of the, the rest of the, and you go to the video, please.
We don't have a video.
Oh, you don't have a video of the females?
No.
How'd that happen?
There wasn't a clip there.
Okay. So what the captain has showed you is our, our dormitory style living units. That's what we have. We have three uh, dormitory style living units, including our inmate workers. And then four single cells for females. One of those is a double, but we never use it as a double. So you can imagine what we're a little concerned because I ha, I also haven't seen in the new proposed plans any additional female units. It's only male. I need female units too. I, I, I have four cells plus the out, the living, the dorm. So we house a lot of females outside of our county. And the question to work release, we don't have the functionality to provide work release to those females. Uh, you don't have anyone work release and, and you're right, we provide it to some of the males. So there's a discrepancy which opens us up to litigation and I'm sure it's coming. I just haven't seen it. You, you, whatever you offer one, you have to offer the other. That's just the way of the world. And so.
Absent security concerns.
I'm sorry?
Absent security concerns.
Right, of course.
Correct.
A co-add kitchen staff. That's not.
Not, not going to work. Absolutely. No, no, sir.
Sheriff, if I can expand on that just a little because in years past, that has came up through ACLU several times over the last several years of why do males get work release and females not get work release? About five years ago, I believe it was, Sheriff Smith was in office and he went up through our judiciary, got our judiciary to buy off on if a female inmate gets sentenced to work release, we will automatically transition them to one of our alternative sentencing programs of what they could be on. So it could be a day reporting. It could be GPS monitoring. And that is how we have been able to get past. But it is about every two years, the ACLU will ask us why. And, and I can tell you, I honestly had not even thought of that, but I've got no. but it is about every two years the ACLU will ask us why and and I can tell you I honestly had not even thought of that but I've got notes down now because if we add on and we don't address that issue how do we keep that argument of we can't do it in our current facility that's a great point.
Practical solution.
We do.
I'm sure that none of the female inmates complain about
Absolutely.
Day reporting or if they can afford GPS monitoring
Correct.
So that's a practical solution to avoid a lawsuit and you do have to have a real party interest.
You do.
In order by that I mean somebody actually has to suffer a wrong or no harm unless you give it to any prisoners to sign.
It that's the tough thing with with the ACLU and I I don't want to speak ill of the ACLU I I do believe in the reasoning behind that they do have a purpose the tough thing is like you said they can find some inmates that'll say I was wronged or I couldn't afford this and I I think we lose part of that argument if we added on to the facility but did not address the female work release situation. Correct.
People say oh there's no work release because you have practical alternatives.
Absolutely.
And let's talk about that that's a great point however we're maxed out on our practical alternatives.
Yes.
So what we talked about alternative sentencing programs which is what you're referring to sheriff inmate labor detail program pre-trial pre-trial program electronic monitoring program so what that means is the judiciary is allowed with discretion to say this person qualifies to go on one of these programs where they're not sitting in the county jail they're monitored electronically I've sentenced them to sheriff inmate labor detail they have this many months to complete that they outside of my my purview they could do community service that's not something I oversee but so all those things we have about thousand to twelve hundred people on that any given day on alternative sentencing which is awesome but we have no more counter space to increase that alternative sentencing program nor do we have any staff we were funded for five more staff members this budget season but I'm so we're so low on commission deputies I can't fund I can't hire alternative sentencing deputies because I gotta have them in the jail so what we've been calling for for years is give us another building if nothing else give us the elections building to make that all alternative sentencing give us five thousand square feet and we'll increase all alternative sentencing so you don't have people sitting in jail but we have but we don't have the support to do that.
But you correct me if I'm wrong you can get more income from personnel for alternative sentencing by increasing the fees I have never had a client who complained about paying an extra five or ten dollars a day to stay out of jail.
I I understand what you're saying but hear what I'm saying I've got funds to hire those staff.
You don't have the space.
I don't have the staff and I don't have the space I don't have enough I I gotta have a there's a I gotta have thirteen to fourteen people on a team minimum it's what it takes to operate that place well we're down thirteen we're down a team today and go back to that hiring that finite amount of people we find to hire when the cap let chief's not in here so I can slam him if he doesn't steal one of my employees right for a better wage so I'm funded for five I just have I have need of the bodies elsewhere because we're under federal consent decree statutory obligations alternative sentencing is just that it's an alternative but there are statutory obligations I have to follow this is an ancillary program this is statutory program here so we would love to increase our alternative sentencing it'd keep more people out of jail however we have no counter space we have no no staff to do it we need a bigger building and the new design doesn't call for any of that okay so the other problem that I see in that is that we're not housing a lot of low-level inmates anymore we're not housing general population inmates that get to live in a dorm of eighty people we're housing mid to high-level violent offenders and they don't get to go play nice with Johnny because they'll kill Johnny right I mean that's what we have needs for we don't have needs for a dormitory expansion we have needs for single-cell solitary confinement or solitary living condition so you're gonna build us a jail don't build us dormitory because we can't put anybody in there because they can't get along we don't house that classification anymore we let those people out every day it's a vicious vicious cycle and so what we propose I mean that's why we keep saying if you're gonna do anything don't do this just do nothing we'll continue to play Russian roulette we'll continue with your money and with your society and your public safety but don't do this because thirteen and a half million just to build the building I know it's gonna cost money to move the water and sewer line in the alleyway no one's done that yet it's gonna it's gonna take money to do those two things it's gonna take money to come to all the compliances it's gonna take us a million dollars more in operating costs over our two point five or three million dollar wage increase that's four million dollars where's that money coming from? and then the newest and latest and greatest idea of of some of the board members is to once again sell the land out on Pond Lane you own twenty-four acres you own it you own it free and clear you've already paid for it under the proposed sale price today by the commission you will take a two million dollar loss in that investment why are you selling it and no one gives us an answer why are you selling it? well because no one will ever pass a bond have you asked for a bond in five years has anyone asked for a bond? or let's see in fifteen years we'd have enough money to build our own jail without a bond I mean come on this is simple math I'm not a math guy but this is simple math Caldwell councilman Caldwell has just sent recently ran water and sewer out through C to CHA Caldwell Housing Authority kitty corner to our land it didn't cost the county taxpayer a lot it is a federal system a federal loan cost us you have a high-power water sewer going to Pond Lane why are we selling the land? because someday you will build a jail I guarantee you you will you even if you build this expansion you will outgrow it in five to ten years and now you've sunk fourteen fifteen twenty million dollars into it plus okay if it's ten years thirty million dollars in wages plus ten million dollars in operating costs and you're still gonna build a jail but you don't have any land anymore because the commissioner sold it and now you go find land and you gotta buy that for a higher increased price with no water sewer that's brilliant it's not brilliant it's ridiculous so I do get adamant about that I get fired up because don't sell my land I own it and someday you will build it you don't have to build it today like I say on the news many times it's not just a sheriff I'm just the guy you hired to run it but it's your problem at risk but don't put all your money into this basket that's gonna make you get past the next six to ten years maybe 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 and what was it that chief told me today? that's I'll get the number from him so I don't want to say it but I mean hopefully we've given you an idea of why we think there's just so many this is so problematic that you should not go forward but I don't we don't have the say in that as the captain pointed out I was never consulted as a principal stake shareholder I learned about this potential expansion last year's state of the county address that's what I learned just as long as everybody else we haven't told the sheriff this but we're gonna expand the jail good to know and then we weren't brought into it in the fall but Idaho Sheriff Association let us know that by the way they're trying to expand your jail okay I'm the principal shareholder stakeholder excuse me stakeholder captain is too you've got to involve us in the conversation that is I appreciate the attorneys getting me on the panel for the RFQ process but I can't stop it I can just tell you what the problems are that I see Debbie?
So at this point I I think I understand you to say if the RFP process moves forward into the design build conceptual piece it's gonna cost between six hundred thousand and a million dollars.
To design it.
Just for that phase and maybe we would find out they're not gonna move forward because it is possible but we will have spent six hundred thousand dollars to get there.
You'll spend some money yeah.
So what can the public do to help pause the process to give time to say you know maybe let's not sell the ground or let's come together and consider other alternatives what can the public do?
I think the public has to reach out to the commissioners Tom Dale Commissioner Dale is not for this he's against this idea he's spoken about it publicly that leaves two but I think the public has to be very very much vocally heard it's your money it's your issue and you need to rap on some doors or make phone calls or write letters or I know that I've been told there are legal avenues that the public can do use to stop the process.
Why don't you just advocate an advisatory vote sure cheaper than spending six hundred thousand to a million dollars find out if you can't build it and I'll editorialize now you know you know what happened the last time the jail went up for election I know it's been five years but nonetheless I would argue that the public is still highly skeptical of a new jail and even though I'm a criminal defense attorney I realize you're willing to have to build a new jail and none of the public here is aware of the fact does anybody here remember Chief Brisbane Chris Peterman? the young kid over at Ada County Jail that beat and tortured for three days in jail we don't want that happen so that's something you guys should think about it's sure cheaper than spending six hundred.
But that's not authorized by us.
No.
That's authorized by the commission.
But you could advocate let's have an advisory vote.
But the public could also advocate.
Sure of course.
So how is it fit you have to have a bond and an election to build a new facility for forty-nine dollars but two of three people can make the decision to spend?
Because that's the way your statutes are written that's a great point that's a great point two people make that decision two out of three people can make that decision to spend that money when for a bond and as everyone understands to float a bond we had to and it was we weren't in office I mean obviously to float a bond you have to have the design built you have to have the design made you have the engineering plans and the design plans and that cost us about seven hundred thousand dollars for the last bond election before the bond could be put on the ballot the county had to spend roughly seven hundred thousand dollars we still own those plans by the way for Pond we still own it and then it's put out to a bond I think where the county has messed up including the sheriff's office I think we're entirely to blame in in part is there was no there was no meetings like this this is why we need a new jail and we haven't even really touched on why we need a new jail but you can see that we're we're on the tip of the iceberg you need a new jail but we're willing to go out and market that idea and explain people we do leadership Caldwell leadership Nampa we'll give tours to anybody that comes through the door to show you this is what your jail is today this is why you need a new one I don't think that was ever done in those three bonds and I am very confident that we have the knowledge and know-how and experience to show you why a bond is needed or if we go a bond but remember folks this thirteen and a half million dollars allegedly is in a fund balance that's over and above our contingency fund so we have roughly thirteen fourteen fifteen million dollars that's sitting waiting to be used we are advocating that rather than do this take that and put it into a a a capital investment fund for a jail if it's forty-five million dollars your fifteen million dollars already there you're already there you're fifteen million dollars into it put money budget money each year as a county toward that so you don't have to ask for a bond or you have to ask for a ten million dollar bond instead of a forty million dollar that's what we've been advocating very strongly Debbie.
Do you want to run the numbers to see what the actual cost would be if we were to build the jail fifteen years or ten years from now? because the cost of the bond the cost of a bond is gonna be cheaper today
Yes sir.
than it is ten fifteen years from now the cost to build it is gonna be so much better so.
Especially if you sell the land.
Exactly and not that I mean I'm a hundred percent supportive of fiscal stewardship.
Sure.
But sometimes fiscal stewardship is making the investment but it's the timing is right for your investment because it's gonna cost a lot more later.
And let me let me point out the captain and I are not advocating a two thousand bed facility jail we're advocating a six hundred to eight hundred bed facility jail the fifty million fifty-five million was that what the last one was?
Forty-seven was the last.
Forty-seven million was for a two thousand bed facility that's we own the plans for that seven hundred thousand dollar plans that sit out at our office on Pond Lane so what we're advocating is don't build two thousand bed facility you don't need that today alternative sentencing programs have dropped those numbers build a six hundred to eight hundred bed facility with the option and and design of phasing in addition additions as the decades go on so you have a forty-year plan instead of a four-minute plan because that's what you're doing you're doing about a four-minute plan so you're right and cost of doing business is only gonna go up it's especially gonna go up if you sell them you have to go find new land you got to test that land you got to design plans for that new land the cost for astronomical and they're your money your money I'm sorry who had a question Dawn?
Just a question earlier so that we don't run into a situation like we did back in the early nineties with the current jail building how many of these contractors designers are have actually designed or built a jail to this day?
Excellent question and all of them and and with with vast array of experience and that was part of the RFQ process when we we put out for a request for qualifications that's one of the things that had to be shown and we've had some very good experienced people in the design teams say this contractor is gonna have these subcontractors that we've seen some very very good very qualified people the last several months including today very qualified because they some of these teams build jails that's what they do correctional facilities yeah good question so not sure what else we can I it's just you you have to do something it's your it's your you're the taxpayers it's your money you absolutely need to make your voice.
I think one of the things you're gonna have to do is you're gonna have to come up with statistics as to what portion of your jail population is nonviolent non-felony inmates but nurse fifteen years ago said nineteen percent of his population on a given day but driving without privileges I remember that.
Yes sir.
And that to me I mean I think the people of Academy County say the only way they can say is we don't want these people incarcerated.
Right.
Period so they exercise.
And and there's a move in the legislature to to address that as well which is good.
And once again you can't always control what judges can do
Right.
people don't make bonds and things like this and but the other thing even though God it's so hard to admit we're all you're gonna have to build a new jail and I don't see why you can't you got parking lots right across the street that there's a thing called condemnation and the property around that area is not you know quarter of a million dollar houses and that way you don't have the transportation problems you can and like you said money you have to knock down the old jail or you may have to build one across the street but then you don't have the transportation.
Well we we don't see the transportation as such a big issue quite frankly and and neither does Ada County that's why they transport downtown and and quite frankly we see it as who really wants their jail in downtown who who I don't I I don't think that's a
But you know that in the old Ada County system they had a lot of courtrooms right?
No I I certainly remember yes.
You should see figure out how much and I think there just should be a mix between the cost of the jail and personnel it all comes out of the same barrel and obviously if you're gonna pay a low-cost jail it's gonna cost you fifty or sixty percent more for personnel particularly with the liability and what I say danger issues to everybody those are unfortunate things.
Yeah now good points.
You know and I don't have a specific number for driving without privileges but to just to those are the people we usually get out on some sort of a detention alternative pre-trial release something if that's the only thing they're in there on but absolutely and we can get all of those I I just don't have them with me I'd have to go back and and bring those up on the computer but if you picture our tent that we have there right now it can hold a hundred and twenty-two inmates this morning if I remember right seventy-eight inmates I know it was in the mid-seventies is all that's in there I have a lot of open beds in minimum custody because I don't house that sort of inmates anymore if we look conversely into our maximum security unit that I can hold sixty-six we're usually in the high sixties in there because that's the inmates that we have here and those are the inmates that I'm paying Ada County seventy-two dollars a day to house over there.
And you know just as an example we've had a rash of violent crimes I'm sure I'm on the news already Mike Jackie talking about that but we've had a rash of violent crimes in our area well we just arrested two stabbing suspects Sunday night and yesterday they're in maximum security and they're not coming out anytime soon that I'm aware of so I mean those not we we can't have those people in general pod population very violent sir.
Sheriff um I know that some communities including Despers County where I worked at that jail before it came down here after that ninety-one in the in the late nineties during the two thousands that county opted for a local option sales tax one percent sales tax that county used to fund their now probably four or five hundred of new jail that's something that you know the officials have even discussed or talked about and I believe if I remember right a war or some other county did that too I'm just very familiar with Despers County because my father had to be sheriff.
Right. To that's my knowledge no one has discussed that. To that's my knowledge, no one has discussed that. Certainly, I have not been in a conversation with that specifically. And that's, it's, it's a great, again, those types of things are gonna have to come from the commission. Uh, we can advocate, we can suggest, but that's not within our, my purview to make those decisions by any means.
Can I get a second question?
Please.
This has to do with staffing, Sheriff. Uh, you mentioned earlier in the talk how, how we law enforcement compete for staffing. And I agree that a hundred percent. And we do have rigorous backgrounds for our staffing, both our agencies as well, all the other law companies. Um, one thing that you have been rather passionate about in the public is, is wages for your staff. So if you have to hire thirty, two-fifty staff, is that something that you and the commissioners discussed in order to recruit more qualified individuals raising the salary based on today's current salary that you're paying at entry-level detention facilities?
Yes, we have discussed it. Uh, but, and like I point out, and I pointed out to them in in general, in public hearing, is you have to be committed to it. We can discuss it and you can sit here and say you would agree with me, but I want to see your commitment on the budget line. And one thing that I think is in favor that we as elected officials agreed to recently in the fall and, or in the winter, and we're just now in that process, it's gone out to RFQ, I think, on this, too, is to find an outside consultant to do an actual market salary analysis of Canyon County as a whole, not just the sheriff's office. We did that last year through our HR office and it showed huge discrepancies and we got nowhere with it. So the commission said, well, we'll hire an outside consultant. We already have the numbers, but we're gonna hire an outside consultant for up to a hundred thousand dollars to tell us what we already know, which is fine, if that's what it takes. But what we've, as elected officials, have said to them, we'll agree with this, but you've got to put it into practice. If the, if the market salary analysis comes back and shows you what we've been telling you for years, then fund the money to get our salaries up so we can retain our qualified, experienced personnel. And quite frankly, chief, even hire someone. Why would someone go to work for us for sixteen dollars an hour? I don't know what you pay your starting salaries, but you know, uh, but they go to patrol, right? I mean, they're, or why, why start for us if you can go to Meridian? We've had so many people start for us. We get them through the first year and we put all the money in and then they go on. We paid their post-academy and then they go on to somebody else. So other entities take advantage of your tax dollars. And and we're in the same county, so we share all the time. But, you know, Ada County, Boise, Meridian, that's, that's hard to swallow when we're losing twelve, fifteen-year employees with literally a million dollars plus invested in them and we don't only lose the fifty, the million dollars, we lose that fifteen years of experience. Uh, because they're gonna start at five dollars an hour more. Well, gosh dang, wouldn't it be cheaper to bring our salaries up to retain those great valuable employees? We don't produce widgets, we produce people. Chief does the same thing. You produce people, don't you, chief? I mean, that's, we we produce people who protect public safety. That's the bottom line. So we really do, we've had long discussions. All the elected officials are in the same boat. We feel that we're in a little bit tougher boat because we carry a gun and drive cars, just like your folks. And we, we maintain security and safety of of an inmate population. So you really need to get those salaries up. And that, that's an excellent point. I appreciate you bringing it up. And that's just a little bit of what's going on over there, but we haven't had a lot of support. It's unfortunate. Sir, Dave?
The plans that were drawn up at the last bond, have you looked at those? Are they a good start? And we have, if you have seven hundred thousand dollars invested in that, is it, if you put a hundred thousand into that?
If you had to do that to adapt those plans, it's the same land. Oh, wait a second. That's if you don't sell.
Yeah, but the plan, that's not lost money then.
Well, we don't think it is.
As long as we still have that piece of land because I mean, it is designed for that piece of land.
And we'd have, we say, our suggestion would be modify those plans. So maybe it will cost you sixty to a hundred thousand dollars to modify those plans. But remember, then you have, and the standard in the industry is to build this type of facility that was designed so that as the years go by, you can add components to that building as the need arises. So it's a, it's a altering of those plans on that land. It's not, that money's not lost unless you sell that land, that money's gone. Plus your two-million-dollar loss. Plus water and sewer just got run out there. At no cost, actual, I mean, there's an actual cost somewhere, but, you know, we didn't have to put it in there. So. Excellent questions. You know, I I don't want to keep you, it's five minutes away from eight.